It's seven twenty-three. We're back in the open session. So, as we do each and every meeting, we will open the session with prayer and pledge to the flags of Texas and the United States. Tonight's prayer will be offered by trustee Lowe and the pledges by trustee Herrera.
Goodbye, Dan. Father, we come to you tonight. Father, thank you for making us so special today. And Father, this morning, as we go through the meeting tonight, we just want to say and do everything that is needed to continue. And Father, it's like lift up our service again with that home of all, that serving our country gives us the freedoms we have here. God, there it is. Did you just name one?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On this slide, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Let me back up, Sarah, for the record, all board members, with the exception of Dr. Krantz. Gets us to item five, public comments on agenda items. Item six is the consent agenda. Board members, you have the consent agenda in your board packet as well as an agenda tonight on the new hires and resignations. So with that, if you've got questions on any item in the consent agenda, now would be a good time to ask those questions.
I've got a couple of quick questions. The budget amendment, I think I understand, I'm just looking to confirm, for the summer school transportation increase, that's not a addition of students that we didn't expect for summer school, that's having the budgeted funds for all the summer school, dog years, somewhere else, now that we're there, moving into the right function. Second question was in regards to purchases over twenty-five thousand, the construction of the two new elementary schools, contracting out photography, kind of historical photography or project photo photography. This is something well above and beyond what we would expect our construction teams to do or potentially district, and our district's busy, but this is spoken about.
Contact is required to provide construction update photographs, those actually documents in full detail, underground utilities and everything else, you can go back and visit in terms of where any P items are, underground items are, things like that.
So this is almost a photographic ad still of some sort.
Correct. That's exactly what it is.
I like that.
So let me piggyback on that because I also, I thought that was for something else. Is that not required when they get the job?
No, it's not. Like, so they require to provide construction progress, mostly with the payout, but not at this level of detail.
So is this something then that Waller asks that they typically would not provide for other school districts? What I'm driving to Scott is why it's an additional cost.
It's not clear, it's not additional cost to contractors, it's a separate cost that we contract directly for to document, just like we would any other professional service that we might hire, it's just another service outside of the contractor's scope.
All right. It was already maybe in mind.
Correct. Quite a point.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. And last question was, I just need a brief explanation, I didn't understand the difference between, I guess, a catalog purchase on the RFPs versus a catalog renewal.
So, last year when we bid up all of the catalog proposals, we gave an optional, I mean, an additional, I think, two-year extension, so that way, whenever we bring it to you, it's just a renewal, there's nothing changing, we're just extending that for one more year. The additional catalog bid is for new vendors that have requested to be part of the district's catalog bid.
So you've got a, what I would refer to as approved supplier list, and you're renewing it, and then new suppliers come along that you're in. Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, I had a question, a couple of questions as well, on the older twenty-five thousand, of your store playground equipment, and so that got me to thinking, we've had playground equipment, had a couple of elementary schools here in the last several months, do we have a standard that we as a district do as a playground? Is there a standard?
Yeah, there actually is a base standard. Now, that base standard is twenty-five thousand dollars, because playground equipment is not cheap. And then, once we hit the standard, then it's up to the PTOs to add pieces that they want. If you want to see the standard, you can go to Hubble. That is the standard.
Okay.
That's the newest standard.
Without additional?
Without additional.
Okay.
It's very nice.
Okay.
Includes kitty cushion. Anybody who's nervous about that, we do supply kitty cushion.
All right. Item six, eight, library books, and item six, eight. This is, this is potential suppliers, right? And this in no way circumvents the bidding process of the library books that are current.
Correct. It's just approving vendors that we purchase from, but it's not like a list of books by any means. Checking the box on the procurement.
Right. Okay. My last question, item six, L, landscape, who's the current provider and what was the evaluation on this slide?
So, we had, I think, seven to eight vendors respond, and so we evaluated those. There's a rubric, very detailed rubric with the amount of vendors that we had, and I believe our current vendor is the one that we are working out of work with now.
Okay. All right, thanks. Anyone else have any questions?
On the landscape, it says, it gives license breakdown per visits. Do you know how many visits per year that might?
So, it depends on weather.
Right.
I think they're scheduled for every other week, so around twenty-four, but during the summer months, they may come more often because of the grass growing, and then in the winter time, they may not, they may only come once a, once a month. It just depends on weather and it is that the direction of the trajectory of revenues. But we budget, I believe we budget for about thirty-six, twenty-four to thirty-six visits a year.
If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion on item six, the consent agenda as amended.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Been moved by trustee Lowe and seconded by trustee Flupinger, that we approved the consent agenda as amended. Any final questions or comments before you vote? Please cast your votes. All votes in. And the motion carries, six, four, zero abstaining, and zero against.
Just permit to take, like, a pause for a second. It's not something that we know, we know, we usually did this in July, but we are fortunate tonight to have two candidates' recommendations that were on consent agenda here with us tonight. And apparently, one of our fan group. So I'm going to pause and recognize both of them and introduce both of them. We, our interview teams completed interviewing for the new Waller High School principal, and we are very proud to announce Christopher Holden will be assuming that position. And also, we interviewed for the director of technology to replace the retiring Rosa, legendary Rosa. And he is here tonight as well, Shane Baines. Congratulations to both of you. Shane, you're going to do a better job than.
Are there any other new hires?
I just want to say, this is pretty amazing that we grow our own employees, because I've known Shane for many, many years, and so, very excited, of course, we just got this new position, so, yeah, very excited. Good for Waller.
Correct. Well, you know, Brian Lowe was taking credit for him because Brian said he was on the board when Shane was in kindergarten. Well, I know that Shane was a first-year teacher under my wife at Walden Elementary School many moons ago. All right. Leading our long, regular agenda, item seven, eight, change order to Dromala Companies' contract to increase the owner's contingency amount for unseen conditions and authorized superintendents or designated to execute such contract document on behalf of the district.
Hello, Scott. Evening. I'll have to report, only have one item please this month. Unfortunately, it's a change order to Dromala's contract on junior high project here. We kept our under contingency when we approved the original TFP, less than two percent of the time, which is effectively less than the normal project of seventy-five, eight percent. This change order is to replenish what we already spent, will increase it to just less than four percent. Still a little kind of, it's been just a very, most bad project, cover additional costs that we foresee some of the, some of the, some of the West Coast, so we can wait until that moment to build.
Well, my first question is, why was in fact, did you carry on the first fill round? Why would we take it for such a last, first, it's not.
Because we were over the original bond allocation time, I think we're just probably responsible, and probably over the hopeful, that we wouldn't need that much funding.
And remember, that project, that project budget was set before the twenty-five increase in inflation, twenty-hundred percent increase, so that had a profound effect on it. And I believe also in that change order is the bleacher.
There's one, one portion of it is the demo of the auxiliary stadium, which is actually a twenty-two project, we'll play a documentary.
And the bleachers at Warren, you know, that project, that twenty that's in this change order, those bleachers were set to be, begin the construction on the athletic field for water, this is getting, in January twenty-four, on the twenty-two bond, but those bleachers become very unsafe, and we want to get, make sure they're down and decided safely secured before it gets go back in. So that was added to that change order.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I think you answered one of my questions, was this new increase, is it reasonable enough to carry us through to the end of construction? You said it's taken us up to a standard four percent.
Just less than four percent, like I said, that's typically a period of five percent on a new build, maybe you keep this kind of renovation. I'm still optimistic that you can get through with this one, that you can, I'd rather hold the money in our hands, especially if the contractor spend it, rather come stay in front of you national money, and get the five percent or six percent of the future, and have the contractor have this contract and ensure that we have the allowance.
Don't get too comfortable standing in front of us to ask for more money. I think you answered another question regarding, we're calling it contingency increase, but the items, the items, so you said the items of the current contingency have already been spent, so we've gone through the current contingency business to build contingency backup, so it's not the increases due after these items in green with the board packet.
Items in green are what we are going to capture, we'll be saucing with the original allowance for us, our present contingency allowance for us.
So then, I guess that brings my question to, if, do we, do we think we have this new change order already all accounted for?
Except for the hundred and fifty thousand that we threw in.
Okay.
A lot of it's identified into the phase two, anticipated costs, so it's kind of, some of those are still kind of allowance numbers, they're not exact, they're pretty hard numbers, like you asked, that's a statement of increase that we run on scope, as I mentioned on that, but it won't be identified with slab, work over there, or is soil improvement. The, the, project life, we're not going to be able to have some of those projects, I just.
What the change order would not include though, is, is we start to go tearing to a very old building, it doesn't have any uh-ohs or any oopses, and, you know, any unforeseen conditions or.
Very marginal, but the fact that we're not doing a lot of renovation over there, per se, probably six or seven demo, demo will come forward, and portions that we are renovating, the scope is such a heavy renovation, we're not saving much, basically the roof and the slab, you know, per se, it's almost a concern.
Two more questions, what is the CO fee in the line, is it ten percent? I'm assuming it's a change order fee of ten percent on top of the contract.
It's the markup, you know, originally the allowances that are, are fee, it's built into the allowances, since we're increasing overall contract price, they're also on the markup of contract rate on the additional funding required.
So the markup's ten percent? Well, eleven point four.
It's a five and five.
So what's the CFP at one point four nine percent?
Couple things in there, it's going to be builder risk insurance, going to go in there, it's going to go subcontractor five percent markup, subcontractor five percent markup, and then your fee and whatever.
Yeah, we have a one percent insurance builder's risk, a one percent bond, a ten percent CO fee, and a one and a half percent CFP.
Correct.
So I was just curious what the ten percent CO fee is.
That, that is the allowing markup over in the contract.
Similar to an O H and P overhead and profits.
Correct. Like I said, five and five is what the contract says.
And this is the most important question of all, I really, really hope I know the answer to, this is easily covered through the high school savings that we had, we had had, we can allocate savings from a high school building, move it over into this.
Yes.
So no, no anticipated costs that go over the anticipated bond for two thousand nineteen?
Twenty nineteen, yes, that would, it's, I would.
That's, that's the biggest question, so. That's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? I would entertain, see, the motion on item seven, eight.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order to Dromala Construction Company's contract to increase the owner's contingency amount for unseen conditions and authorize the superintendent or designated to execute such contract documents on behalf of the district.
It's been moved by trustee Warren and seconded by trustee Herrera, that we approved the change order to Dromala Construction Company's contract to increase the owner's contingency amount for unseen conditions and authorize the superintendent or designated to execute such contract document on behalf of the district. Any questions or comments before you vote? Please cast your votes. All votes in. Motion carries six, four, zero, and zero. Gets us to item seven, B, take action to approve a contingent fee contract with Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins, and Mott, LLP presented in section six point three oh of tax code, said contract fee for the cancel, collection of the government receipt plus owed to Waller Advanced School District, and notice of said contract is posted with the agenda in accordance with section two-two-five-four of the government code. Audrey.
All right. Well, there you may present, members of the board, superintendent Moran, and all of our guests here. As you know, before we make any administrative recommendations to the board, we go through a bidding process in order to make sure our decisions are data-driven, research-based. Recommendation to change our delinquent tax attorney is not an easy one that we made. We have a longstanding relationship with Larson and Wyssinger, and they have served the district very well over the years. However, as the district is changing and rapidly growing, so are the needs of our tax office. We have reviewed the services of our current provider, and we feel there is opportunity for improvement. Upon evaluation of our current delinquent tax attorney and the services provided by other delinquent tax attorneys, our recommendation is to change to a larger firm with an excellent reputation using their proprietary software that will meet the needs of our district. We anticipate that this change will also improve the time and efficiency of the overall tax office operations. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Jason Bailey with Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins, and Mott for a brief introduction and overview of the delinquent tax collection services that they will be able to provide to our district. And Ottilia, sorry, Ottilia Gonzalez is here as well, I apologize.
Thank you, Laura, for this opportunity, we appreciate y'all having us out here, kind of tell you a little bit about our firm and the services that we provide. We short it down to Purdue Brandon to make it a little more easier for everybody to understand that Purdue Brandon, we started in nineteen seventy specifically to help cash draft government entities that collect taxes and handle, and it's been our specialty since. It's what we do, is what we specialize. I've been with the firm since nineteen ninety-six, my law partner, Ottilia, has been there since twenty-eleven.
Yes.
Okay. Twenty thirteen, four hundred and twenty-six to nineteen. But anyway, so we, it's our specialty, it's what we do, we provide dealing with tax collection services. We're going to do that in all arenas and in all stages of it. We're very proud of what we built, our reputation, and our collection services. It's going to start at the beginning, at the collections, we're going to have our trained staff that are in-house, they're going to make phone calls, the attorneys involved, they're hands-on attorneys, phone calls, emails, letters, anything you can do, reach out to people, Walder I S D, have them pay their taxes, begin to resolve our mutual property, which is they owe taxes, they own the district, it's their lien on the property. We do is what we call compassionate collections, we're out there not to strong-arm your people, we have a big stake, we have the lien, we sell their property, but the last thing we want to do, so we're going to reach out to them, give them every opportunity to contact our office and the tax office to resolve this matter before we take it to any place level, we're going to reassure them, treat those people with respect, regardless of where they are, if it doesn't work out, we will activate within more than adequate time to do something, also represent you in the arena of litigation involving the state court levels, doing the tax litigation, tax sales and resales, we can do all of those things, we have special divisions that will provide those services to y'all through our firm. We're also very proud of our bankruptcy department, headed up by Melissa Valdez, which is a word certified bankruptcy specialist. All of those claims will be filed for new bankruptcies on behalf of the district, make sure that you're protected and you get the tax money that you can collect. It's all done, no additional services to contingency fee that's included in the contract. So at all levels of the arena, whether it's pre-cure litigation collections, litigation, condemnation of the state's liability road, they, they, wherever, you were necessary to get the taxes collected for the district. As she said, we do have our proprietary software, it's in-house, it's designed specifically to help our staff, which is really what we're proud of, is the quality of our staff to collect the income taxes, so every step of the way helps us manage it. We work with clients that already utilize the software that your tax office uses, so we're experienced with getting that data from them electronically, we upload it into our systems, we have a live version of the Yost tax hold, we're giving correct information in the taxpayers we're contacting, and all the litigation, bankruptcy, all that, so we'll be able to do that, we locate monthly, and have help our staff and our attorneys do the collections that we do. We currently represent Wald County, we represent Royal ISD, and instead ISD in the area, and some other smaller jurisdictions. We currently represent y'all for audit and appeals, self-reported audits for the state funding, which y'all deserve, there's changes in the current world, and also hopefully, we have a property value study issued, we do represent y'all, we have, have, two dummies here, not that long yet. But the main thing is, we are prepared and ready to do this job for the district, we're excited, we have the opportunity, we want to let you know what we're doing, we prefer to, we, we, once a year with the board to give y'all a report of what we're doing, what they know the office is doing, what the tax office is doing, how they're performing, this turned over to us, how we're performing. We're fortunate enough to be here this evening, we'd like to come back in about six months, transition to slower January, February, March, give y'all a report, see what we're doing, we're excited to tell you about the success we've had for the district, and any of the reporting that y'all need on special issues or administration needs, we can meet with y'all at any time. I can talk a little bit about taxes, we're out, we're doing this nineteen ninety-six, it's the only thing I've ever done this in a career. So I'll leave it at that, but if y'all have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. Both Phil and I would be the attorneys working, we could, we could approach, we'd be working all our, have our numbers, social numbers available for the administration tax office.
After we approve, we'll, we'll.
We'll start, we'll start meeting towards, well, next week, we'll probably meet on Monday to discuss our expectations, our plan, and then their contract will take effect July the first.
That's when the taxes traditionally turn over to your lender tax attorney, so it'll be a smooth transition, where you can get the tax office to find out their needs and relatives, and we are ready and prepared to start elections in July.
What happens to litigation authority process for the old firm?
They have, under their contract, a six-month wrap-up to continue the litigation, there's not a lot of litigation, we have Walder I S D, and they want to wait that, they'll be happy to pick that up, if not, they'll have six months, and if six months is over, we'll substitute in this council, and we're just, we're just.
I understood, right? Software, the tax office has got, compatible with y'all?
Yes, it is, we can, we can work with.
We're going downtown, we're going downtown.
We can work with any software companies, and we do currently work with that software company, we have it uploaded in, I think, three of our clients.
So it's interesting, you work with the county already, so you know our area a little bit, from what you know of us currently, and what you know of us potentially in ten years from now, what we think our biggest needs are.
I, well, you're going to have, obviously, a ton of growth, you're in both counties, so that's going to have the issue, we work in both the counties and the court, I think the issue is going to be the growth, managing that, as things change, property changes, characteristics of your, your occupiers are going to change, they're going to be a lot more converted, a lot more housed, and we are tied into the title data, which is the company that you, all the title companies use to track ownership, changes in property, lien holders, and, so we'll be contacting the right, right people, it's going to be managing that, that growth, as your business, personal property accounts are going to grow, as you have more need for people to have businesses come and locate here, that's going to be an issue. Hopefully by then, this huge jump in bankruptcies that has happened recently will be over, but it'll be making sure that those business counts are collected before they disappear for some reason. And in general, we've seen every kind of district and every kind of growth, and if they're going the opposite direction, we'll be prepared to handle any of these at the district.
You mentioned a couple of districts next door, have you worked with other larger districts that are in the area?
Yes, Ottilia's headed up the collection for both of those, those districts, and so we're familiar with, with Royal ISD and instead, and all the, we can do them with all the suburban districts in Harris County, Austin, Napwens, and some around.
So it's the biggest district you worked with?
The largest district is probably either Orbin ISD or Pasadena ISD for a school district.
And did we, Ms. Sam, did we look at several firms for this contract, and did we give the existing firm the opportunity to, to renew them?
Yes, we met with our current delinquent tax attorney, had multiple conversations, and requested multiple pieces of information in order for us to.
the existing firm the opportunity to, to meet?
Yes, we, um, met with our current delinquent tax attorney, had multiple conversations, and, um, requested multiple pieces of information in order for us to make this recommendation to the board, um, and we also looked at, there's another firm that, um, that's a very large firm, that we, that we looked at, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Audrey, there is, I know them wrong.
I'll take that as a compliment.
I was gonna say, we plan to meet and exceed our expectations, but it sounds like I better do something to meet that. I promise you that, that Ottilia and I are gonna do everything we can to meet our expectations and the board's, and we're gonna be happy, come up here in six months, and we'll meet the thirty this evening.
I've been with the board thirty-three years, and I've never, I was former tax attorney, I've never missed, longer than I've been. And I won't miss one more day in fact.
Well, we, we, we love to tell you what we're doing, we're excited about it. We also love to be involved in the community area, so, you know, you can see us around, or the NFT Foundation, they, they, we've been a part of the community. Uh, so you may see more of me than you want, but.
I got that. Hey, I'll tell you what, I don't mind signing those checks, because they don't cost us one percent.
Um, would you go over the fee structure and, and talk about, uh, how the fee is established and what, what percent goes where, and then in that, also, if you would kind of touch on, if I read right in the contract, there's a cost difference between two thousand and one and two thousand and two, there's a five percent, so during the explanation, maybe we'll touch on that as well?
Yeah.
Can you drink water, please?
Sure. No, you have to pump it up, you know.
All right. Real.
Sam, did you?
I already drank my water for the day.
The fee structure is set up, that y'all adopted a penalty to be assessed, so statutory, the penalties are set statutory, so the base taxes set, they're all approved, they don't pay it, the penalties you came to approve, the district gets paid, because people don't pay their taxes on time. That maxes out at twelve percent on July first. You also get interest of one percent per month, that all goes to the district. Y'all adopted an additional penalty, which is the collection penalty, that also gets attached on July first, they receive three notices at that point, people don't pay at that point. The empty, the base tax, the penalties, the interest go to the district, or attached to the account, and then that additional twenty percent is attached to the account. So when we collect it, we collect the base, the twelve percent, the interest, and the twenty percent. Y'all keep everything up to twenty percent, and we get paid to twenty percent. So we are at no cost to the district, all the services will be outlined, so there are no additional costs to the district. The maximum penalty that used to be able a district to oppose was fifteen percent, so that's what it was, and y'all, at that point, made a switch from fifteen to raise it to the maximum of twenty percent, which the legislature authorized, I think, in two thousand and two?
Two thousand and two.
Two thousand and one? It's one of those changes. And some districts slowly changed over to twenty percent, and so that's why you have that rate. So we're gonna get fifteen percent for those prior years, if that's all a y'all were imposing, and then we'll get twenty percent from that time forward.
So Audrey, that, that is the same fee structure that we're currently under, right?
Yes, that is correct.
So the cost to the district, if you call it cost, uh, is, is identical?
Correct.
And so what you're banking on is the service is gonna be much better, it's gonna be more efficient for your, for the tax office and our school district, right? So, okay.
Because they do everything electronically, um, and they can upload, and they have their own software that they've developed to, um, process, review, and maintain, and review those tax rolls. I mean, the tax rolls, the delinquent tax rolls, when you print them out, they're multiple reads of paper, and so, um, by moving to a firm that can process everything electronically, it'll be a much faster and more efficient process, and you can work more of the, to the actual.
And, and how often will you request a report from these guys?
They will.
Oh.
I would, I would anticipate we would, um, either do quarterly or semi-annually, it just depends on what they, um, discover whenever they get into our tax roll. Uh, we'll probably meet more frequently in the beginning, and then, um, of course, annually we'll bring it to the board, um, to report to you guys.
And if I may, there's certain times where that's, right now, on July, we'll get it turned over, okay, we can look at it, but do you have any big accounts? Do you have any issues? What do we see? Your collection percentage is about the same, do we see any differences? This district, if they may make any changes, as things change, communities change, or your payment and plan parameters, and we expect to be in constant contact, because we're hired guns, and we do whatever you tell us to do. The district sets the parameters, you just go out and, and do what we want to do. Uh, and so that's a good time, probably three, four months after that, or have you seen it going on, or on the page, so that they can expect to see what kind of tax collection they'll have here by year.
All right. So, Audrey, have you any questions? She, 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 call it, well, y'all?
Anytime.
Yeah. Just my knowledge, just rough border magnitude, I mean, July first hits, I mean, how many millions of dollars are we usually looking at as a district on average, in terms of taxes? Do we have any?
I don't think so.
Seven, seven figures plus, I assume, right?
All right. All right.
I would guess, I would be two.
I think most districts average between two percent and six percent, um, but after getting in and looking at the data from the past couple of years, we can tell you what the trends are, any percentage that remains the lien over and over again.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Since there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion on item seven C.
I made a motion to approve a contingent fee contract with Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins, and Mott LLP pursuant to section six point three oh of tax code. Said contract being for the collection of the link with government receivables owed to Waller ISD. And notice of said contract is posted with the agenda in accordance with section two two five four of the government code. Cast your vote.
I'll say it.
Been moved by trustee Lukinger and seconded by trustee Lowe that we approve a contingent fee contract with Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins, and Mott LLP pursuant to section six point three oh of the tax code. Said contract being for the collection of the link with government receivables owed to Waller and School District. And the notice of said contract is posted with the agenda in accordance with section two two five four of the government code. Any questions or comments before we vote? Please cast your votes. All votes in. Motion carries six, oh, oh. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, next item, item seven C is consider approval of settlement in matter of TWC complaint number, uh, four six zero two oh two two oh seven oh five two, as discussed in closed session, and authorize the superintendent to execute the same. Helen, follow.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, members of the board, and Superintendent Moran, you know, I make it my practice not to follow my friend, Mr. Bailey, to the podium in the multiple districts that we represent, because he's always sounds much more knowledgeable than me, but at least my agenda is slightly shorter. Uh, we are asking the board to approve a settlement in the matter of a TWC complaint as presented in executive session. Are there any questions from the board members?
I would consider a motion on item seven C to approve the settlement of the matter as discussed in closed session.
I make a motion that we approve the settlement in the matter of TWC complaint number four six zero twenty twenty-two zero seven zero five two, as discussed in closed session, and authorize the superintendent to execute the same.
Say it. It's been moved by trustee Herrera and seconded by trustee Warren, and we approve this settlement in the matter of TWC complaint number four six zero two oh two two zero seven zero five two, as discussed in closed session, and authorize the superintendent to execute the same. Any questions or comments before you vote? Please cast your votes. All votes in. Motion carries six, oh, oh. Thank you all. Uh, next item on the agenda, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Waller ISD, board of trustee officer selection. Board members, each year in June, um, we, we talk about officers on board in that time, so, uh, we'll, we select a, uh, president, vice president, secretary of the board each June, and at this moment, the board is open for nominations, um, for either a slate or individual. Uh, we would start with the secretary, unless someone has a slate of officers they would like to put forward.
For president, I'd like to nominate a slate of candidates for officers to be listed as board president, William Warren, for vice president, Maria Herrera, for secretary, Jeff Lukinger.
For members, there's been a slate proposed, um, are there any other, uh, slates proposed or nominations? Here we have none. Vote on this, uh, this slate of officers that has been proposed, that would be William Warren as board president, Maria Herrera as vice president, and Jeff Lukinger as secretary. If you agree with the slate, please cast your vote. All votes in.
Six, oh.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you very much.
Takes us to informational items, number eight. Eight A federal grant applications, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, ESA Consolidated Federal Grant, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Perkins V, or Perkins Five, Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the Twenty First Century, and twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Special Education Consolidation Grant Application presented by Chief Academic Officer Kelly Turner.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and congratulations on your new positions. Um, I had the opportunity to talk to you guys this evening about our federal grants applications. Um, in January, on January, January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, CB Local, um, was updated and adopted. Within that, it addresses federal awards and public notice and input, and I'd like to read that to you so you understand while we're going through this tonight. The district shall provide public notice of federal grants, applications through an information item at a board meeting, and by publishing information on the district's website, the district shall make available opportunities for public input as required by law for the granting agency. So Waller ISD is making federal grant applications for the following grants, as you heard earlier. Um, the first one is the twenty-three, twenty-four ESA Consolidated Federal Grant. Within that grant, there are four different components, Title One, Title Two, Title Three, and Title Four. Um, our planning allotments for Title One right now, um, as released on May ninth, is for Title One is one million, six hundred twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Um, approximately eighty percent of those fund go to salaries within our district. Um, Title Two, our allotment is three hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Um, one hundred percent of those fund go to salaries within our school district. Title Three, allotment is two hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars, seventy-five percent of that allotment goes to salaries within our district, and Title Four, one hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, um, eighty-two percent of that allotment, we go to salaries within our district as well. Um, working with Andy Carranza, she is our new director of state and federal programs, so she will be the district contact in reference to it. Um, that grant will be submitted by July first, uh, twenty twenty-three because of ten month, our twelve-month employees, and we have to have it submitted by July first if we have twelve-month employees that are paid out of any of those grants. Um, the other grant that we talked about is the twenty-three, twenty-four Perkins Five, Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the Twenty First Century. Uh, Kelly Sumalat Lowe's is the main contact, I'm the secondary contact for that one right now. Um, that grant amount is ninety-four thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, those funds specifically go to support our CTE programs of study, um, within the junior highs as well as the high school. Um, our focus there will be our new programs at the high school specifically, our ultrasound program, and providing the equipment materials that they need for those. The twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, Special Education Consolidated Grant Application, the contact for that one is Kirsten O'Mon. Um, for idea B, um, we're projected to receive one million, four hundred ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Um, ninety percent of those funds go to salaries within our district, and then also within the consolidated grant within Special Education, we do give the idea B for preschool, and that will be an additional fourteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Um, when you're looking at this, our district side base meeting that we did hold on Tuesday, uh, Mrs. Carranza did provide an overview of the ESA Consolidated Application Grant. Um, at the end of that meeting, there was a feedback form provided to all committee members, so they could provide feedback on the topics that they heard that day. Um, in addition to that feedback, um, information in reference to, uh, the ESA grant is posted on our state and federal programs. Not only does it list the current year grant planning amounts, but it also lists now the new planning amounts as well. As communicated on our district website, it says that all comments and feedback can be provided to Mrs. Carranza. Same thing for the other two grants, comments and feedback can be provided to, um, Kelly Sumalat Lowe's and myself, as well as Kirsten O'Mon. Um, and so that is the basic information as far as, uh, federal grant applications. Um, this is a neighborhood requirement, so whenever we have additional federal grant that we will be applying for, uh, we'll be coming to you all and making you aware as well, and seeking input and comments in reference to it, in that same nature through our website and other meetings that we might hold. Any questions?
All right, right now, if you see to ease.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So everything for CTE, so, um, you know, Kelly Sumalat Lowe's will be what goes to the end of her contract year this year, um, which would be the end of June. Uh, if we do not have a replacement name by that point, um, I would step in just like in other times to fulfill that. Um, working, I've done the Perkins Grant before, so if maybe I can complete the Perkins Grant over the summer. With feedback from Kelly, she's done a lot of the late work in reference to it already, has it planned out, has it mapped out, and so really, it would just be filling in the grant. Um, but working through it, hopefully, the new person that we bring in, um, will be knowledgeable of it, or they'll work alongside myself. Um, Andy Carranza, when we were having our weekly meeting today, um, she even stepped up and volunteered and said, you know, if I need to work on the Perkins to help out in the time being during transition, I'm happy to help out in that area as well. But if anyone has comments or feedback right now, um, they can send them both to Kelly and myself, because we're both working on it.
Is this truly an application?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it is.
We get all their money, or some percentage?
No, you know, this is, this is a formal unfunded, so we know the amount that we're getting. So when I read off to you our planning amounts, that is what they say they're going to give to us. Now, as, um, you know, Andy Plato can acknowledge, sometimes they come back in August, and they may reduce it a little bit, or they might increase it, and so this is known as our original planning amounts. Um, and then in December and January, they can usually come back. If we have any roll for it, that means money that we did not spend the previous year, we would then get it usually around January or February, or if they have additional entitlements where maybe other school district didn't use it appropriately, um, that they would allot those entitlements to other school districts to use as well. So this is our initial, we call it the initial planning amount, so this is our initial right now.
When the projects are done and the money comes out, all of charred it up, and, and it shows Walder ISD, local taxpayers pay this percent, state pay this percent, and federal this percent, or these current monies included in that federal.
In the federal line, yes, sir.
Even though you're buying that.
Yes, sir, it's still considered our federal funds, yes, sir.
Are, are these, uh, Perkins's, I mean, that's, we've heard that a lot.
Yes, sir.
Put that together, too, are they, are they, are they getting around along?
Oh, yes, sir, they, they have been.
Title one, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four, they're around for a turn.
Yes, sir, they have.
And you still have to apply. This is just a new federal recovery, and they have to meet all the rules of entry, which Audrey even. This is just a new federal requirement, and they have to meet all the rules of endure, which Audrey even, or team, make sure they meet on the expenditures. And most of those go to augment basically staff members to help kids, you know, particular areas in special education. When you say that goes to salaries, it goes to staff members.
Those are supplemental, I think the key thing to understand is you can see they are supplemental positions. So these are like positions above and beyond. So these are like your interventionists, they're your instructional facilitators, they could be instructional coaches. So they are not your classroom foundation teachers. These are our, what you consider supplemental positions that are on top of in addition to.
They have to be that way because then it's considered disappointing and you give your money, take it away, it's disappointing. And they do check that, they are very strict about that.
That's a, it began in nineteen sixty-five by Libby Johnson when he was the president, and so that's what matters on Libby and so that. The money is decided on by the US Department of Education. Now, once they make their decisions on the federal level, that's what departments are getting what money. And those then filter down to the states. And so if the decisions haven't been made with the Department of Education, they make estimates for the state. And so our amounts that we give right now are really just estimates until the US Department of Education has finalized their budget and given us our final allocations.
Okay, the strengthening career and technical education, that must be fairly good from the federal government, aren't it?
No, sir, I can see Perkins been around, I even started Perkins, I can't say the exact date. In fact, I can say in two thousand and eleven, I started working with Perkins back then. So it's been around, now it's not been the amount of ninety-four thousand. You know, when I started working with it, it was around fifty. And so as our numbers continue to grow and we have more students participating in CTE programs, that helps with those federal fundings as well.
I worked with Perkins in the nineteen nineties.
Yeah.
Yeah, because Perkins had a different name.
Had a different name.
Yeah, it had a different name, it was Perkins, and then it became Perkins Five. And so now it's Perkins Five because it's like star two point out, so you always have to have a little. Any other questions on the information item? I guess just to make you aware of the applications.
Rough order.
Yes, sir.
Do you think last year's were more or less on average?
I can tell you exactly, I thought you would want to know that, Mr. Warren. You know, I compare, knowing for the type of questions we might get. So when I compare our, I call it initial allotment, initial allotment to initial allotment. Not where we are right now with Title One compared to our initial, but initial to initial. I'm afraid my class is off due because it's really small. So in Title One, we had an increase of one hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. In Title Two, we had an increase of seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. In Title Three, we had an increase of nine thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. And in Title Four, we had an increase of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars.
And about the preschool program, the fourteen thousand dollars seems like it's the drop in spending.
That is not much, when you're talking about our early childhood education program, that does not do much for that program. So you know, utilizing that to possibly sometimes get supplies within the classroom or to bring any professional development to help those teachers that are working with their three-year-olds and four-year-olds with significant disabilities. That is usually how those funds are set. So you didn't hear me say that went to salaries? Because that is not enough to cover a salary of anyone that we provide. So we use it for more supplemental supplies as well as professional development to improve the instruction within those classrooms.
Well, always take whatever money we can get, right?
Yes, sir.
I actually like to compliment the district and the administration, I've watched it from afar over the last few years, y'all seem to work really, really hard to get grants. And when you go above and beyond to make sure we, we apply and get accepted the grants, so thank you for that.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any other questions? So guess what, I'll be back every year now, I have them, I mean, like this. And then also to inform you of any other federal grants that are coming our way that we would be applying for. Alright, thank you.
Takes us to item A D, Bond and Construction Update by Mr. Scott Walker and BLK Principal, Melissa Fleming.
I'm excited to start off my update this month, I'm gonna have BLK, Melissa Fleming, and Krista Thomas come up. And give you a presentation on how our design is kicking off on the new education support center and the act facility we have laying on the green, adjacent to the. With that, ladies.
President Warren, I'm going to the board, and it's President Moran. We are excited to be here tonight and give you this design update on the next two projects out of the November twenty-two bond. Okay, I'll let you, I'll let you do it. That's all I'm afraid of. So tonight, I'm gonna share a few acknowledgements. Okay, stop it, okay, got it. We'll do it, I'm gonna figure this out. And before we get started, just want to make some acknowledgements. We do appreciate the confidence you entrust in us every time with these projects. And realizing that the Board of Trustees does have options, and we appreciate that and these opportunities. Especially working closely on these two projects specifically with Waller ISD leadership that is listed here, starting with Mr. Moran and everyone who would be involved in this ESC project specifically. Moving on to the ACT Science Facility, really happy every time that we get to meet over the campus administration, talk with end users. We think it's very important to the process as well. And so here, this particular project, we were able to meet with Ms. Fletcher, Mr. Fulton, as well as Ms. Lowe's and Mr. Sopley. And getting a lot of information and good feedback so far on those, on that particular project. Of course, as we work through this, we're guided through the process with your Waller ISD Facilities Department, with Mr. Walker, Mr. Marcus, and Ms. Davis specifically on these projects. But I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge our entire design team, a lot of times you see a few of us come and seek with you, but there's a host of people in the background who work on these. To make these as successful as they are. So of course, as your architect, we're proud to be here and represent everyone, but want to acknowledge that we do work with some fantastic design team members. And those being listed here, Matrix Structural Engineers, who is the structural engineer. Salissa Bryan, who will be doing the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, technology, and acoustics on these projects. Westwood, who's the civil engineer and food service design professionals, when we need some food service consultancy. And then, of course, in these particular projects, the procurement method has been determined to be construction management risk, and through a great selection process. And have selected Stewart Builders, it's a district that, so enjoy having them on part of the team as we work through all the construction to make sure that we are thinking things through constructability, the budget, and everything from the beginning of the project. Okay.
My finger doesn't.
Oh, no, right. Good job, Krista. Appreciate you. So as we get started, as you'll, as you all know, though, that these two projects were approved by the Waller ISD community in the November twenty-two bond. That three hundred and sixty-three point four million dollar bond to address growth in aging facilities. These two projects do have some different durations, and we are still working through these, but these are the anticipated completion dates right now. For the Waller High School ACT Science Facility, we anticipate December twenty twenty-four completion. And for the new Waller ISD Education Services Center, which you may hear us affectionately call the ESC tonight, just for, for shortness. But then probably in the May twenty twenty-five range, just based on the size and scale of that project. But again, the solutions that we're gonna present tonight, we believe strongly that they respond to Waller ISD's rapid growth by providing buildings that support the district's long-range plan. These ideas were developed through collaboration with the district leadership, starting with bond planning and continuing forward. But to reinforce your mission to serve all students and provide opportunities to develop intellectually, physically, and socially through a quality system of teaching and learning. We realize that we only really truly have maybe one educational facility on here, is the ACT Science, so providing those resources to the Waller High School students, provide project space and so forth. But nothing is more important than making sure that you're setting your district up for the impending growth as making sure you're all under one roof and building that teamwork and collaboration. At the professional level too, for everyone you serve throughout the district, you're supporting your, your teachers and students with that facility as well. Okay, now that I've figured it out, I'm going to pass off to Krista to walk through where we're at so far in the design, give you an update of the development of these two projects.
Thanks for having us. First, just want to go over what we're calling the master site plan. So just on the previous slide, we are talking about that last, I call it the fourth quadrant of just south of the existing Tolt Junior High and just west of the high school. So we're taking those two parcels, and here you'll start to see in the red blocks where we're gonna locate that high farm, but also the ESC. With this, it was really important that we didn't, you know, place this right in the smack in the middle. We really want to be thoughtful about this, we want to make sure that the district isn't shoehorned in here and give y'all space to expand because there's quite a bit of property out there. So we zoom into the property a little bit more, there you see on the south is that ESC, and then on the north, the end, the ivory barn. So off to the west there, we have a little over fifteen acres available for future laws of Waller ISD facility, as well as to the north and to the east. So again, making sure that we're, we're not just talking straight in the middle, we want to be thoughtful about it. And also, we're starting to look at the road configuration through the site. And making sure that, one, it's not only a safe and secure facility independently, but also thinking about what's around it. So we're starting to talk, it's taking security of Kelly Bates and how we function through there. And more importantly, looking at the existing junior high and the high school, and making sure those are secure when you have a lot of visitors coming through a more public building at the ESC. So, and then looking at the ESCs, and then a bit more ESCs. To the south there would be where the main entry is, and we have private visitor and staff parking. Off to the east side of that would be where we have a driver and warehouse parking. So one thing to note is that this would also be where our main transportation center would probably. So to the north there is the bus parking. And so ESC really shields the, what would be a field of yellow buses as you're approaching. And so that's on the backside of the facility. So again, the bus car parking up front, and then at the back, the bus, bus parking. We also are looking at white fleet parking, so all those white fleet vehicles where they're gonna go, they'd be secure on site. And then also, with talking about security, you have a separate parking for admin and for, so making sure we're separating that for more public events. And there's different entry points into the facility that we're still trying to keep fair, we'll see a little bit more on the floor plan. Next one, zooming in to the ivory barn. So we wanted to have a nice connection to the existing CTE facility. But again, looking at the connection of student walk back to the high schools, that's also included into this project. So we don't, again, just build the facility and have their trucking through grass to get over there or having to drive necessarily. So just like we do with Bulldog Boulevard, that goes through the middle of the baseball softball fields, we will have one come down south, and we can connect back up to Bulldog, and we can connect over to athletics, depending on where students are coming from. But with that, we still have trailer parking, and then also just backyard parking, so you're able to have shows there, students are able to go over there if they want. So we'll start the ESC first, the first, fourth main ESC. We're housing a lot of individuals here, and with that, we want to make sure that we, one, provide separation, but we're also connecting all the offices together. Through that, you see that main entry just at the south, the, the south of the campus. But before that, we also have what we're calling out as the tax office entry. So now that we're bringing tax over to this facility, we still want to have a secure environment for them to come into here, so we're able to utilize what, hopefully it will be a candidate comes across. And then we have two entry points, individuals that are coming in just to service the tax office, they come into a secure area. They're not necessarily able to get back into the facility, but it's now integrated into the facility, you don't have to have a separate entry point. And then our main entries, you come in, we're treating that as a, just like we do at the high school, the junior high, elementary schools, having a secure reception area. Their receptionist will be behind the box, be nice and safe, and have a whole check-in process through there. As we start to look through these suites, we started to group different individuals together. So in the blue at the south there, we have your business tax, EGR. Then up to the north, we have records, child inclusion. And our yellow is transportation. But right in the middle there, it's more of our public spaces, so you'll have a nice larger boardroom. And then also conference space, so that area is, excuse me, spaces more so after hours are going to be utilized. But as you can see, they are secure from the rest of the offices. So anybody coming through there, they just go directly to the space they need to, they don't have to just start in any of the office spaces or get them back. Just on the opposite side of that is our technology suite, which will also have its own delivery entry. So if they orders are being dropped off, they can come in through there, there's a delivery drive area, we'll help come in and make those deliveries. So the north in the orange is gonna be our administration, communications, and safety, school safety suite. Again, having a private and secure entry point at the back there. One piece that we're really starting to develop and design is the studio lounge, so it's getting away from the idea of, you know, your standard teacher's lounge, where it's a closed office space. But making it more of an open space for all your individuals to come in and mingle and actually interact with each other, and also serve as an area to get out, get out of the office and actually go and sit and have some actual light and get out of just the box of your day-to-day, the office space. So integrating the collaboration in there. Last season, we talked on is our warehouse and repair shop. So the warehouse will allow for the storage, right now it's kind of scattered throughout the district, but bring it all into one facility. And provide ample space for everything, from IMA storage to maintenance storage and technology storage, some of those bigger items, and res needs space and all that. And then we also have our repair shop for the buses, we're looking at ten days right now, which will include area for tires and silverware cream, where it can go into that. We also have a second floor, which would be the remainder of the suite, including social programs, CNI down in the blue. In the middle, we have better programs, teams, CTE bilingual. And then to the north and in the blue is the facilities. So with that, we have a bridge over here up to the elevator, and that would have secondary reception space to help away from getting into there. But we're really excited about the project, I think it's gonna touch almost everybody in the district, because that's where all your staff members will be. And again, we started with the programming, really making sure we're mailing down all the spaces, and we're starting to look at maxing it up. So right now, this is a very conceptual schematic image, where you can start to see the high volume of the two-story on the, is like your right side. And then the more of the single-story office full up there. But again, we're just scraping the surface of getting into this project, looking at materials and the design of the exterior campus. Going to the high science facility. In this facility, we have both a show arena and a practice. So just to the south, the main entry would be that show arena. But more importantly, not, this isn't just the show and practice arena, but we do actually have two classrooms in here. So when you come into that main entry, just to the north there, we have a vet tech classroom and animal science classroom. It's also where concessions and buildings are at, which would then take you into, you need to go to the south to the show arena, or you can go over to the east, which will bring you into the pens. On the north there in the red, those are gonna be our cattle pens, we're showing plenty cattle pens or large animal pens. Down in the middle in the yellow, those are gonna be your wash, drying, and grooming stations. And then at the south, you have your small animals, so we're showing approximately hundreds of them there, split up between land, goat, and pigs. So a little bit of periphery there, and really gonna help that with the energy and getting a spot for the animals of our high school. So again, we're starting to look at the maxing of this, we wanted to bring some of the materiality from the high school. So the idea is here, so we want to make sure that it doesn't look like an afterthought, we want to make sure that it's integrated into the high school. We bring some of the materials over, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here, because we have a nice present to go after, so we're gonna bring that here and make it one cohesive canvas.
Alright, so what are the next steps? So tonight, and we brought you this update, you can see here some of the meetings that have gone. You can see here some of the meetings that have gone through the progression of the development of the Ag Science Facility. So of course, we did a project visioning in preparation for, for the bond cleaning. And we picked up with schematic design earlier this year, gone through schematic and design development thus far and ready to really start nailing down the details for this. So continue to develop those construction documents and get these documents to Stewart Builders to get out to the subcontractor market in early September. And then ultimately, the idea would be to bring the GMP to you all for approval in October most likely. And then construction can then, they could mobilize and get started in November of this year. And like I said, wrap up anticipated December of the following year, December twenty-four. For the ESC, again, we've gone through a few schematic design meetings thus far to get to this point. And now we're just starting to get ready to get into design development, start talking about the details of materiality and how, how is each office outfitted and so forth, getting into the details. So we'll progress through those through the remainder of the summer through July. And hopefully, once we get through that, we move on to the construction document development. Ultimately putting those documents out in October of this year and bidding that to the subcontractor market through Stewart Builders as well. And again, the goal would be to bring that GMP by the end of the year, most likely at the December board meeting. And then realizing a little bit longer construction, this is a larger facility, you've got a lot of fuel and so forth. It's some longer lead times there. And ultimately, the April-May timeline of completion for that project in 2025. With that, we are available for any questions? I know you've got some.
So a big show. I was under, I might have missed. I was really impressed with it. It's going to have a place out there. They're going, it used to be a country school, fixed, all these houses were around. Kids don't have a place to play. I thought it was going to have a place to put kids in their suburbs. Did I miss that?
Well, the question is, how do I, okay. So on this right-hand side. Yeah, show arenas is south here on, on that left-hand side. But the red and then those, you showed that green and pink with triple, those are all pens. So we do, we have twenty cattle pens and then a hundred small animal pens. So those are where the animals would be housed and those are the projects. But we do have the show arenas where they can host their own shows. The same thing with the practice. They can practice. They've got multiple arenas in that aspect to, to prepare for a show.
That those sizes are comparable to districts around us with the same.
Yes. And so that's based on, that's based on building this out for, this is a high school facility. This is for Waller High School. And then based on that capacity and the projects, you know, the project number of participation, this is what, this is what, yes, for that size campus.
And just because they have, just because they have pens for cattle or other animals there, doesn't mean they have to keep, the students have to keep their animals there. Like you said, there are places for the kids that don't have somewhere to put them.
And these, these numbers right here are currently based off of the number of kids that bring their animals to our current local shows. And so, so you're correct, every kid don't have to house their kid, their animal there. Some, some, any of you that have a little bit of overview for your local shows, that's what this is for, getting y'all bring your animals there. And that's where that would be. So for me, that's where they can house.
So in the, for example, in the western areas and the women from, will, will it be like a shark facility? Because kids working their animals sometimes they can get dirty and like they need to go back to class.
In the, in the public regression right now, we do not have a shark facility for students. But we could, we could bring.
Like a small locker room where they can change clothes.
Change clothes to, you're older, time to prepare your animal, you know, see your animal.
Yeah, I imagine after you're washing your animal or show, you'll obviously have to change clothes. Where does that happen?
So we did, we're talking through that and recreating these, the fresh rooms. You know, the ATE falls, taking advantage of that and releasing them, making them larger, putting headbooks in there, looking at mirrors and also power in there because, you know, they're going to be able to get built up before a show. So making that room is typically in a, to actually not provide a lot of power, to not just, but here, knowing that we want to locate that, look at your locations, so they do have the opportunity to change with the stalls and then go off to the ocean.
And the facilities I've seen before, the pens are very flexible. So I would say if you ended up, first day, the first year you put it on the ground and you got more cows than you thought and less goats or less, you ran it or something, you could, you could re-rate your.
And that's exactly, with the, the pig pens, it's actually slightly smaller. But the idea is that if they open up that first year, they honestly have to have it in a meeting, ground panel there and they can have a larger one and then subdivide it to have a full fifty in there. So they could start off with just twenty-five and then as they grow, it's still the sufficient size to split them in half and have the full fifty.
So I'm, I'm sure that this will be provided to us, I guess, as a PDF file or something. Right. But I really want to look at the site layout. I envision being able to share parking between these facilities and football stadium and home side. It looks like, is there an intended boundary there?
Yes. Now, that is not an intended boundary. That is kind of like.
Yeah, we've got the drainage easement that started that high school side and comes all the way down that we are not going to.
And that's temporary, right?
Until they put in.
Until they.
Yes, fix up division and then we can, we can pave that for parking.
And so it's not a ditch.
It's a collegiate.
Right. Well, right now, I think y'all have some collegiate over there, but we're essentially just staying off of that. We're not building any permanent improvements or structures. We are crossing it with some roadways, but not trying to build a roadway on it or parking lot right now because then you would be liable for replacing that whenever they.
Yeah. So, but if we, you're going to hate the roof. The design of the two buildings internally and that's, I mean, y'all can take care of that. That's fine. What I saw is fine. But the overall site, if, if I'm, if I'm doing that site layout, I would be looking at the future of being able to do something with that collegiate. And if I could do something with that collegiate, I want my parking for these facilities shared, in other words, all was flipped. So that it's going to be easy. If I can now, if I can, if I can go across that drainage way, because when they put something in, possibly it's going to be underground, hydroconduits. But at least I can go over. And now my proximity is much closer to share parking, to share parking with the home side. And the other thing is, is that a future space for some future, to the, to the east side of the arena?
Yes, we've, we've left that open for, you know, future athletic facilities that may pop up in Walrider, such as at some point, somebody in the future is going to want a mandatory.
So I would, I would swap places, the Ag facility with the future.
I would. Yeah, I was going to spring that up. It's like you're, you're creating another two-hundred-and-fifty-yard walk to the, to the rain day and back to the school.
But fairness is in close proximity to the existing Ag building. Are we going to be using both Ag buildings on the same line here?
Such as those two classrooms, they're able to go back and forth through the same CTE facility and then over to, and they also right currently have construction over there and so restore their trailers. So just looking at staff proximity of where all of those teachers are currently out and on, we're looking at that connection.
Yeah, I just heard some, you know, because of the logistics, getting kids back in the hole from that far away to the high school has been some of the issues.
No, it's definitely starting blessing. We've been blessing his back.
So they use more before.
For sure.
And then thinking if that was, maybe athletes potentially with your locker rooms or just to base it there too. So there is, I, I could really understand.
Yeah, I don't know if you need more stadium parking. I think we've got that covered with the high school.
School to the north.
But in the future, if you do decide to quit other athletic facilities out there, and I don't know if, if or when that's going to happen, if you have the availability of that parking on that collegiate, because probably by the time we do that, that surface that is considered do not touch right now will be flipped and that will be lifted by Harris County Parking Board. It's in peace if they require us to be able to build on it. We could not stop the north-south flow of water. Oh, there's subdivision going across the street.
They'll put it underground.
They'll put it underground. Might not even run through our property at all.
Yeah, first.
Run into actually a storm story.
Is that, again, I can't see from here, but is that detention on the southwest?
Yes.
And the stadium detention.
It's not being altered.
No reason to turn out altering the stadium detention.
Is it open at the.
A whole sample.
Yeah, any, yeah, any, you're trying to leave it, even the one up to the north, just, or just south of Schultz Junior High now. They don't want to touch it. All of a sudden, you then have to bring it up to the regulation. So again, here, anytime we touch that, then they'll, they want to relook at the entire site. Right now, we want to look at the master plan of this quadrant. And so we're planning for the development of, as she mentioned, this quadrant in that detention location. So working with the depths there and there's some give and take there. Again, this is still conceptual as we work out just how many roads we have and things like that. But trying to make sure we, we save that space for these future potential facilities on site and making sure that we're also providing all the infrastructure, detention and so forth as well. Of the existing building?
Wait, you're still, how can you do that?
Rebuild it.
I, I agree with that, none of us in this row building. So we would definitely love to.
Couple of, well, one more minor question on the Ag Center. Not being able to see the floor plan. Feed storage for the, for students? There's somewhere they can put their students.
Yeah, so we actually have individual walkers we utilize for the students. You know, it's hard to see on the screen. But we have currently one-for-one for the pen, the walkers. So they're able to secure their tack, any brushes, shankings, everything and not have to worry about the mixing and legaling or things walking off.
Yeah, yeah. Easy access after hours for students to come and take care of their animals. The ESC, I'm trying to count my heads while we're doing this, but I think I came up with five separate buildings that we're going to be able to.
This was, as I remember when we took this back to the VOD community, this actually is a huge cost savings for the district because instead of building all these different facilities, like we did initially play in the VOD. And really what precipitated that was us looking at Scott and myself and the OK, looking at the old element, how much money we were going to have to put into that building. If it was, we can be very clear that that was not financially a smart move to do. And how we could gain some, some cost savings, lots still made in these, and also keeping the district. This is something the district won't have to touch for, for years, like it's a fifty-year lifespan, starting in the block as soon as it opens. Where probably it was a fifty-year building and you're starting a ten-year block, even with the renovations, that were more expensive than in grand total of them trying to do this. So this actually will save us money on the, on the twenty-two block, considering we were estimating somewhere between five and ten million dollars.
Agreed and appreciated on the cost savings. I mean, even though like current efficiency, you currently got people here, two buildings over there, you've got people that were on so, you've got people scattered all out, now under one room.
And, and the apartments are designed, even in their own little hubs, like business and HR and business finance are together. Remember eighty-five percent of our budget is personnel and HR handles that and business finance handles the money. So it makes sense for them to coordinate better together. And Kelly's area, she's breaking all the curriculum, special ed, bilingual, all these programs that talk about servicing kids and how we support them are together. And then maintenance in facilities, Scott's team is building it, but maintenance has got to maintain it. And they're in the same office area now, sharing plans, sharing, so maintenance can have an input of what they can maintain if we, if you build it. And then of course, safety and security has jumped temple and is very important to us. And this allows us to have safety in the, develop the situation room so that the tragedy like happened in New Holiday does not happen. There is a room in there that has space for the lead from Harris, Harris County Sheriff's Office. There's space in that room for Waller County Sheriff's Office so that when a crisis situation happens, Rose and the cameras are pulled up in that room and you can direct and coordinate as executive command right from that spot. So a Shane. Yeah, all the same ones, the cameras that are in the building now. Right Shane, there's Shanes tomorrow. And be able to coordinate that with Jamie, our executive for safety and security. So there is some real strong efficiencies. If you notice even technology, makes it easier for, for staff members to be able to drop off their computer, be prepared for students to drop off their computers to be prepared. And then of course, the warehousing space, which we currently have stuff just squirreled everywhere. And that's, that's not a good use of capability.
Yeah. So I was looking to the warehousing space. Is that, or is it?
It is to the west of the.
Colors that you're, you're shopping, it's all those multiple colors all together. Everybody has like their own kind of warehousing space from the apartments throughout the building. So as Krista mentioned, you've got child nutrition, even adding a freezer space there. IMA materials, technology, maintenance.
I miss miles, like the product and structural materials that you bring, coming out eighteen-wheelers and then get checked into the warehouse and then get inserted out.
Right. So, so our range is, all your stuff is going to be stored?
So we're also, what are these maintenance?
Maintenance is in the blue square, the white.
Along with construction. So you've got construction maintenance in that facility suite, their office space. But then in the warehouse, they do have double lounge space with some rezoning and the horse space so they can.
So they'll have just racks, super drags and stuff. And so eighteen wiggers, they'll come in and drop a load.
Yeah, they're all service space.
So how do they, where's being a lot for the warehouse?
So right now, we have ample parking seats that can maneuver into the back there. But we have overhead doors that we're supporting. And I will say, we're just scraping the surface, the surface of all those more maybe gritty questions and sort of understanding what the district really needs and going from, you know, are we looking at pallet racks? So looking at the volume, are we going to utilize more rezoning? So right now, it's very, yeah, very.
Yeah, you're in, you guys have moved out to D and D.
But you got, so you got ten plus by.
An eighteen leader, this up here, rolling in an eighteen leader for the quest.
Yeah. And so we're working very closely with our civil engineers to make sure that we are using the correct termary uses, not only for our bus, but for eighteen-wheelers. And also why originally this was split, but we had, we had more warehouse space that needed those garage tours. We're initially talking about it. So making sure that they have, you know, direct access to come in and out. But again, on both sides, other repair shop and warehouse, we have ample space for them to maneuver in and out.
And it doesn't look on, look on that, we actually toured some soccer facilities and K D facilities and volleyball facilities. And one of the things that we saw in the soccer facilities is they complained that there was not enough spacing for buses to be able to back up, turn around and do. to be able to back up, turn around and do those elaborate K turns in buses too. Uh so we've actually, that space has actually been extended on the site considerably compared to what you're gonna see inside here in Katie and a tamper room for eighteen wheelers and all the buses. So then back up.
Your tight radius, um typically looking at thirty four above, and we have fifty foot aisles. So we are really looking at that distance in there, so then you're not perfectly turning at thirty degree radius, you're not gonna help in this one.
The the square footage for the maintenance warehouse, how is that established or how do you tell?
And this is.
Did you put in the district account down there?
Yeah, he 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 was he was done in cooperation with all the different teams, I can tell you those meetings were a whole lot of fun.
I will certainly start with four warehouse spaces and then through the different collaboration and talking and hearing what each other needed. Everybody started sharing their space a little bit, and that's how I made that over here, safety and security.
Some were letting skills down, some were grew just based on the need, but we have met with all the department leads um and directors to be able to ensure that they're getting the appropriate space. But as we do go in through design development, starting this, like Krista mentioned, when we start to understand how they wanna store, are they just looking for heavy, you know, um shelving, are they doing pallet racks such as that, we'll still make sure the proportions are appropriate for how they wanna store.
I would assume you're basing this as all of not just today's needs, but.
Correct, this is for future.
This is designed to take us up to over thirty thousand kids.
And safety of the office space, you'll see some of the the deeper hallways in there that allows for y'all to come in with more protocol transfer, more open concept. And add more desk in there, if for whatever reason it does exceed the projections that we've been discussing.
Well, that's questions on construction, have we thought about or can we think about a phased approach and opening? I assume will be done, I couldn't assume wrong, I assume will be done with the bus area and maintenance still even much earlier than will be done with the area with finishes. We could potentially get the bus drivers and buses and mechanics in there quicker.
Um potentially, a lot of the logistics there is though, the the nerve center, the electrical system, things like that are all gonna be intermingled, right? Uh so it could be difficult, especially here being a lead town and stuff like, so bringing on a portion of that facility early, possible, but not real early. If we minimally are. I think transition time we're looking at is early summer of the year, which is a good time to make a transition of these uh facilities.
We hope in the last day of school they just park their buses there.
Yeah, it's right up here.
Leave from. Board members, any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, I was following, I thought we were good.
Well, we'd love to let you work the boards, so.
So you can help pull my hair?
He's kidding, he's joking.
He's getting up, he's like it up.
One more tap away. So there's my student estate. There we go. Here's the triple right now, now two car. Third car day on the nineteen, Walter Jr. High line is the two story additions, you see, we're moving into already, we're gonna finish up, so we'll be moving into that in July and August. Getting ready for the start of school year next year. Uh furniture delivery is anticipated in July. Schultz, the renovations, there's some shades to complete, although in the twenty twenty-two, we'll see we're doing some more improvements over there. If you go by right now, you'll see the electronic marquee and the front entry camp here being completed to finish up that project. All of them, it only remains the uh generator still on delivery uh for this fall. And we still have those priority one projects that we're working through, uh some finalized design review. This is Walter Jr. High. Oh, I'll click it good too. So we're wrapping things up, the end need to trim out, you'll see if you walked in, about ninety percent complete. The central plant was started about six weeks ago, and they're already starting testing, balancing, commissioning a lot of the equipment, it's already operational. Started dropping ceiling tiles throughout, whiten it out as they finished up the above ceiling punchless items. Um final wall paint's going up, uh you see laminate going on the floors, on the walls, so the finish touches when they come in. The wooden floor last month, I think I showed you the wood was down, it's uh ready to be sanded and finished now. Now the other activities, none of the gyms are done. Uh porcelain tile's about ninety-nine percent complete, there's probably a few places that have to touch up. Uh extra metal wall panels, finally getting real close to finishing that up, the last place they have right here is behind the admin building. You see that's an open, uh they have the primer oven, biggest thing they have is the underside of that hangover. When we go into the summer, we get the abatement, that's part of that change order to uh over on the west campus, it's pretty substantial over there. That'll start next week actually, after the new containment and then demolition starts shortly after that. Uh the portals that we had leased over there have already been removed, uh so teachers' boxes actually got moved last week from their classrooms over at the west campus into the new facility. Um and Technion First Trust connections are scheduled for this July. So let's look at some photographs. Here's the north side of the building, uh I gotta call it the backside, looking towards the tennis courts. So you can see the metal slogans all there in the masonry, the security fence is also going up. Here's the uh south side, the cafeteria courtyard, right behind the admin building. Here is last week, after school got out, we're already starting to demo the uh covered walkway with temporary temporary covered walkway we have between east and west campus. Here's the portable being demoed, it says every day I go out there, thinks I can't keep photographs up there anymore for years. Uh they've already put up their temporary fencing for phase two. Then we go into phase one, you'll see one of the last areas we're gonna be finishing up is the media center, starting to put on the uh the paints there and then work away from the ceiling down, the flooring going on. You can see the main corridors coming along real well with uh tiles and other finishes. Here are some wood accent walls, one on the left is the gym lobby as you come in, concession in the far corner over there. Restaurants down at all. One on the right, that is over a serving line, looking into the kitchen area, so cafeteria, you do have the uh wood wood accent there. This is a little accent wall that separates the uh main stairs behind you from the cafeteria. That's small window and tile wrapped out all the wall there. Here's the uh blue clear story, so you have blue and yellow, little wave finding, two clear stories on the campus. So everything in this particular area will be blue. And you'll notice the uh handrails, guardrails have gone up, those stainless steel. Here's a cleaned up picture, I think you've seen this before, this is a finalized view of the student restaurants with the drinking fountains installed. And loving partitions in the restroom, you can see they're almost ready for students to show up come August. Here's a typical science lab. See the perimeter uh casework and the students' desks will be in, their tables will be in the center. Here's the guardrail, handrail over in the yellow uh clear story. And as we go down, you'll see coming in a little collaboration area, they got a TQ wall that's going on, basically marker board surface to go along that whole wall. Move over to twenty-two, I got elementary six and seven, those are quickly coming along. A little wet last month, attention to plugging and building, it's underground utilities and working on uh other mud and center point agreements on the paperwork side. As we just shared with you, the ag center and the educational support center, uh design fluid, we're on rate with that, syrup builders who recently brought to you, and they've been helping us on pre-construction. As uh Sir Glenn Moran already mentioned, by the end of this year, we should be bringing in CMP and starting construction. Covington, uh the driveway project there is actually a contractor that is also doing the portable relocation for us. Um so he's working that, he should start moving portals next week, I know he's got leased one up on rails, another one already blocked, that's ready to move. So he just basically on blue all four of those within about uh six to ten days. So that, as soon as he gets those moved over to Covington, he's already got a little pre-activity, he's doing other curbs and stuff. He still remains confident he's on schedule for August fourth completion date. Schultz, they've moved in over there, making lots of noise, uh they're just gonna do, probably demoing uh locker bases, check to have all that concrete underneath there. But he has started, he's scheduled to complete that work this summer also. Refresh your memory with the prototype of the elementary six, seven design, with the front admin area and the classroom part. This is the Del Rose site area, uh from the backside. Um it also shows the three acres that we recently acquired last month that'll be brought into as part of that campus. So hopefully in the near future, you'll see that also clear. Here they are working on the building pad and including the additional line. Here's the residence site number seven, uh has temporary road access to it, a nice muddy rice paddy area, uh coming up out of the ground. You can see site utility materials are being stored there on both sides, this is, they're working on water, sanitary store, anything underground. Here's some of it going in. That was a dry day, that's all I have for you. Questions, details? That was a twenty nineteen project, and uh we actually uh included that with some additional work, we wanted to do in twenty twenty-two bond. So we're looking to go back and re-repackage in that whole thing in design, so we're gonna be looking at the design here um this 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 year and then get it back out after the rezoning, and if school loses a lot of enrollment in twenty-four, it's gonna be a lot of best impact on the campus at that point.
It's a very similar uh project to what we did with Paulman Elementary, and that is an unfunctional project, you do a lot of eleven hundred kids here in that building. We have to drop them rolling down with the rezoning to be able to do the construction. Either that or we just have to send, you know, eleven hundred kids over to side here for a year. We decided that we we wait on that until we can actually, because it's just more than just putting a security box in. Just the design at that point, you just can't put in just a box and change the whole, change the whole building. And when we rezone, they should drop down to about six hundred and fifty kids at first year, and then slowly climb back up again. And it'll allow us to sell them, so we can do the construction that we need to do while they're in the building.
Walter Junior High, um looking great, ten weeks ish left. Looks, I doubt you'll admit it, but it appears to be a bit ahead of schedule.
Absolutely.
Around money. What do you think the biggest risk is there, what would keep you up at night for not being able to open?
I don't believe there's anything been opening, it's just gonna be uh small details, it's like when you move into the house, you know, fixing up paint, minor architectural things. So otherwise, uh if there's really one thing, we haven't started up the kitchen equipment, so moving into the kitchen, getting it fully operational for day one is probably the biggest thing, but I anticipate that happening fairly quickly.
That's all ready to equipment, so.
But all the uh. I know I probably slightly broke a record with what we went through in the high school, when we were sledding, getting that kitchen inspected or certified again, much easier in Waller County than.
It's the same process, so it's, but they're both in the city and in the county, the county provides the health inspections.
Um you mentioned Stewart, you mentioned Stewart's helping out, they're working well, didn't mention Durick, that Durick Tech's doing a good job.
Doing well, also like I said, they're doing great on those two, the new elementary campuses, so both of our uh new construction managery have been great additions to the district's constructions.
Members, any more question, or should we let Mr. Walker off the bench?
Right.
I was gonna ask you to go back to the third slide.
Brings us to item number nine, public comment on non-agenda items, I believe there are none. Uh item number ten, future board items, July, we have to look forward to teacher incentive allotment compensation, expenditure OTI funds for twenty twenty-three. Mr. Moran, important dates on item number eleven.
Uh big one coming up is all that summer retesting days. Um that's those that they, uh big things for the summer, these good kids that that struggled in the summer, they're in summer school right now. That's why we started summer school so quickly, uh those kids, as you know, we've been in summer school now for a week. Uh and they're getting the remediation they need, getting ready to go into those uh star test courses. And then.
No more business in front of the board, I show nine oh nine, and it's gaining its attorney.